Good evening, everyone. Good evening, good evening. Dr. Rodriguez, where are you? Good evening, everyone. It's 6 o'clock PM on this beautiful Thursday, June 3rd, 2021, and I would like to call this regular meeting of the Lansing School District Board of Education to order. I don't know why, I just forgot what I was saying. Will everyone please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you very much. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Vadi?
Here.
Dr. Burrows?
Here.
Mrs. Hodgins?
Here.
Mrs. Lawrence?
Here.
Mr. Mrs. Liljy?
Here.
Mr. Lopez?
Present.
Mrs. Moore?
Present.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Present.
Mrs. Willis?
Present.
Former Miss President?
Thank you so much. Any public comment this evening?
No, ma'am.
Thank you so much. We are moving right along to presentations. First up is scholarship recognition. Sam?
Thank you, President Lawrence, and I will turn it over to Dr. Chapman, who will present our scholarship winners tonight.
Thank you Superintendent Sinekrope, and good evening, Board of Education and Lansing School District family. We are proud to share with you tonight two very special scholarships and the recipients thereof. Each year, we strive to make sure that these particular two scholarships, because they have such special meaning to those of us on the executive team and to the district at large, and we want to make sure that our students know that they are recognized for their hard work. The very first award is the Sherwood Foundation Global Citizenship Award. That award totals $10,000 over four years, $2,500 per year of post-secondary learning. On this evening, we are proud to recognize the recipients of this award, which focuses on students who have shown a commitment to their community and very specifically aiming at pushing forward or expanding the impact and understanding of global citizenship at their local school campus. For Eastern High School, the recipient is Kiko Yang. For Everett High School, the recipient is Bushra Almajarish. And for Everett High School, I'm sorry, for Sexton High School, Amani Alrabia. This is a great accomplishment, and we would like to give all of them at this time a huge congratulations and applause. These students were specifically chosen for the contributions that they have put forward to, again, to their families, to their fellow classmates, and to their school at large. So congratulations, and we know that you will continue to make your families and the Lansing School District proud. The second award this evening is the Henman Award. This one-time award in the amount of $2,500 recognizes the students of each graduating class that is deemed as having the highest ranking honor or the highest ranking student of the class we've traditionally referred to as the valedictorian. This year, the valedictorian recipients of the Henman Award are representing Eastern High School Eva Arzaybu. For Everett High School, Abigail Sears Wagner. And for Sexton High School, Colin Janik. We all look forward to this coming Sunday, June 6th, where we will celebrate all of the graduates of the class of 2021 for Lansing School District, and we will be honored in hearing speeches from each of the three valedictorians that were just named with the 2021 Henman Award. We say congratulations, and we bid you well. Thank you.
I wish to just offer my congratulations also on behalf of the executive team and the school district for your 13 years of hard work that's got you to this spot, and we look forward to watching you in the future. That concludes this presentation, President Lawrence.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Sinekrope and Dr. Chapman. Moving on this evening to Budget Amendment Number Three, Mr. John Lang and Ms. Kim Adams.
Yes, let me just talk just for a moment here on this. We're presenting Budget Amendment Three, and we're also, and see, we're going to do a draft overview of FY22, and we'll have more detail on the 17th. Right now, we're just looking at, and one of the reasons we're doing this, just so you know, for this one and the next presentation, there are so many unknowns right now. Those of you that have seen in the legislature that, you know, we found a lot more money than we thought we'd have, so there's possibly going to be more foundation allowance and other things that we might have. So we are looking at Budget Amendment Three, and we may have an option if funding comes in the way it may. We could have an option of having a Budget Amendment Four for the end of June. But right now, we just got to wait and see what happens. So I'm going to turn it over to John and Kim and try not to talk, because I always talk too much during finance budget stuff, so I'll try and be quiet.
Thanks, Sam. Yes, Sam mentioned, you know, hopefully the legislator gets some things figured out here soon for not only the this year potentially, but also for next fiscal year soon. So just as a, oops, reminder of where we started, Budget Amendment Two, which we did in April, which was as of the end of February, we're just under $13 million, fund balance at 12.9. And then with the details, you'll see we're going to add about another $1 million to the fund balance for this year, which is, in fact, the finances through the end of April. And the Budget Amendment Three is kind of where we try and get as close as possible to the actual expenditures. In the audit presentations later, later this year for, that Mayor Casterson presents, you know, he has to talk about the budget variance and how we try and get within 1% of actual expenditures to the budget, and this is where we try and shore that up. So, so we will go into the details of this. So the revenues, overall, there's an increase to the budget of about 919,000. It's made off of some last adjustments for property taxes, mainly for the local revenue, some adjustments in state revenue for the special ed heavily funds, ministers, retirements have increased, some state aid, there's some adjustments up and down for prior years and current years, subreimbursement from the ISD, ISD tuition on the federal side, and then some Medicaid and special ed county for the federal revenue reduction. So again, all the details are there. Overall, like I said, about a $919,000 increase to revenues that are budgeted for this year. And Kim will go into the expenditure side.
Good evening. On the expenditure side, we have quite a bit of savings budgets that were not spent, mostly due to COVID, such as custodial incre, well, I'm sorry, the beginning is the increases. We had increases for custodial. We planned on charging ESAR, ESAR II, but those funding sources haven't come through yet. We had $100,000 increase for utilities, $78,000 increase for that equity audit and West Ed, and then communications increase. And then we worked with all of our departments and our schools to come up with some savings for budgets that would not be spent through June 30th, such as transportation, $496,000, substitute teachers, $300,000 savings, athletic decrease for sports that did not occur, tuition to other institutions, and departmental reductions. Those are various across the district. So in total, we had a net increase of $1.2 million, closer to 1.3.
I couldn't help myself, Kim. I have to just add something to that. On the custodial increases, it's, it, these are mainly the air filtration systems that were purchased and the UV machines, machines, UV systems that we have to clean the rooms when we have infections. And this was going to be paid for out of ESAR's funding, which we have not received yet. So, and we, that's one of the reasons we talk about crazy and how different this is. Now, we'll talk more when we get to FY22 on some of these things. Sorry, Kim.
You're good. Then on the wage and benefit side, we had 1.3 million savings for unspent wages and benefits, primarily due to open positions from the February through now, through the end of the school year. So part of that was special ed, $626,000 in savings, school level, $551,000, and departmental, $172,000.
Thanks, Kim.
You're welcome.
Oh, just as a kind of an overview, the fund balance after the Amendment Two again was just over 12.9 million. Increase in revenue, increase in discretionary costs on the expenditure side, but a decrease on the wage and benefit side, so a net of around 979,000 to bring our fund balance for the Budget Amendment Three to 13.9 million. And again, the fund balances after the, each of the amendments, 10.5 after Amendment One, 12.9 after Amendment Two, and 13.9 after Amendment Three. And just as a reminder, as note there, that this obviously all changed once we have a final audit, which occurs in August, and presentation to the board in, generally in November. So those numbers will change, but that's the, again, the final audit for the actual expenditures. And that is what we have for Budget Amendment Three.
Are there questions?
Dr. Rodriguez?
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. I figured out the red, red color represents what? The numbers in red?
Yeah, so the red color would be a negative impact to the fund balance. So if it's on the revenue side, it would be a decrease in revenues. On the expenditure side, it would be an increase in expenses.
My second is you, we got to decrease in wages and benefits. My question maybe don't need to answer now, but I am, have a concern if this saving is affecting the students' achievement.
Let me, I'll take that, John. Dr. Rodriguez, most of these changes, if you look at special education and the school level changes, are positions we were unable to fill this year. Either they were a specialized special education position, or a certification that we couldn't find a person for. So they were, so students were, either had a substitute, or a teacher was working an extra period a day to make sure that that got taken care of. So it had nothing to do, we didn't drop anybody this school year. It had to do with being unable to fill hard-to-find positions, for the most part.
Thank you very much.
Other questions from board members?
Got a couple hands up.
I can't see your hands up, so.
I can stop sharing so that.
Okay, Rachel, or excuse me, Mrs. Willis, and then Dr. Burrows?
Mrs. Willis, go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate that. The fact that we were able to overall increase our foundation allowance despite all of the chaos is encouraging. I remember being very concerned and Superintendent Sinekrope kept saying, "It's okay, it's okay, we're going to end up okay." And so I am glad to see that we've been able to end up okay. Could someone just help explain to me how we will reconcile when we do get the ESAR funding for that $2.3 million? How much of that custodial increase will we be able to charge back to ESAR's, and then what does that look like for fiscal year '22?
I'll take a shot to start with. I don't, if John and Kim may have the exact numbers, but these are the, I would guess, off the top of my head, we will be able to charge 100% of that, because we're under contract with Sedexo right now, so we pay a certain amount a month. So there is no, nothing that changes in that respect. So when we talked about this, I think it was in February, we were talking about making sure that we had, you know, the air filtration systems, and we'd pay for it when ESAR's came in. So in essence, what we're going to do is that we're taking it as a negative right now, but when we get the ESAR's money, it will be added back into the general fund budget.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Dr. Burrows?
Yeah, I, just a little bit of explanation. What are school level changes? What are some examples of school level changes under wages and benefits? I know you covered this in part with Nina's question.
Yeah, in part, but if you want specifics, I don't know, Kim, do you know the specifics of that? I don't want to guess at it if you know it.
I do, but I just need to bring up my file. My hands are a little slow today.
Dr. Burrows, you're talking about on the staffing side?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And Kim will pull it up and like, you know, I'm guessing his positions at the school level were not, that were not filled, general education positions, but I'm going to let Kim tell us for sure.
It's a large file. Sorry, it took just a few minutes. In the most, for the most part, they are teaching positions and noon assistant positions.
And then what would be examples of departmental changes?
Sure, like the technology department has, I think, three open positions. Finance has an open staffing accountant position. Trying to remember, oh, public safety maybe had one. Office of School Culture, I know, had two. Almost there.
So it's just, Dr. Burrows, it's just, it would not be the instructional staff, it would be the support staff?
Okay. And then, can you explain what departmental reductions might be?
Yes. So for example, our legal budget, we didn't anticipate spending the entire budget, so we made a reduction there. Our transportation budget, we didn't, well, that one was listed above, we didn't expect to spend. The finance department, John's office gave up some funds that they weren't going to spend. Sam gave up money that he wasn't spending in the office of the superintendent. Pretty much every department contributed. I know Ms. Kamala did. We worked with her quite closely.
Okay. And I would just add one thing to that. Decided to put it in one big category, because I have a, I don't know, it's, maybe it's a phobia I have about putting like a $2,000 change. And so there were, you know, there was 11 different apartment, departments that account for that $180,000.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions from board members this evening? Okay, thank you so much, John and Kim. Thanks for all of your work on this. I know we're very much relieved to hear this news that you have to give us this evening, so thanks, thanks again very much. Continuing along in the same vein, let's keep going with fiscal year '22 budget. Sam, or John, or Kim, or?
I'll start, and this, this is going to be the interesting one. And I'm going to tell you something. I've been doing budgets for 20 years at least, where I've actually been, had a say in it and everything else, and we've never had a budget like this. And a lot of it has to do, going back to what we talked about, the ESAR's funding, a lot, we have a lot of ESAR's funding coming in. And so we're still looking at, well, upwards of all of it, for the most part, because we actually don't have any of it that has been allocated to us through the legislation. So what you're going to see for, and this is a, this is a draft, and what we're going to do is to show you the revenue and expenditure side, and try to answer as many questions as we can. A lot of those answers are going to be because of things that happened this past year. For example, we're going to talk about the super blend and the foundation allowance that made a big difference. I guess what I'm trying to prepare, you know, I, we were, I was very happy with Budget Amendment Three. I'm not terribly unhappy with the FY22, what we're going to look at, except that it's just been very difficult trying to figure out, you know, how mu, not only how much funding, but when is it coming? And it's always that way, because we never know when the budget's going to pass at the state level, but it's almost worse this year because of just lots of stuff. So with that, John, I'll let you and Kim run through that, and I'll, as I said, try to stay out of it, but I'm sure I won't be able to.
Sure. Couple things just to point out on this real quick. So you can see in the middle column, that's the Budget Amendment Three, which we just presented. And one thing to point out, you can see the revenues are quite a bit less than what that overall is, if you look at the entire resolution. This is just the general fund budget. So any grants, their grants, revenue matches expenditure, they don't affect the fund balance at all, unless you use a grant to charge against something that you would have had in the general fund. So as far as how it affects the general fund, fund balance, we're just showing the general fund right now. So, and what kind of Sam, just to reiterate what Sam mentioned as far as the unknowns, if you remember last year around this time, when we're presenting the final budget amendment and the budget for the current year, is that the unknown was how much was the state going to take away from us? And now it's the exact opposite. We don't know how much they're going to give us. So for the, on the conservative side, since there are still discrepancies in what the governor's budget and the senate budget and the house budget is, we are right now just planning for a $100 foundation increase and per people foundation increase. And that is based on 9,722 students projected for this year. So when you look at the revenues, as Sam mentioned, the blended count, the current year, this was a one-time, I guess you could say anomaly for what the state allowed for, how they calculated the student count. It was, it basically allowed us to retain $6 million in, in state aid this past year, but they're planning on returning to the, the prior way of doing the count, which is, would be 90% of the fall '21 count and 10% of the spring '21 count. So by doing that, it in effect takes away that $6 million. There's also elimination of the $66 per people one-time increase that was this year, that's state aid, Section 11D. And then we have the projected $100 per people increase, and with the enrollment to 9,722 projection, all that equates then to a decrease in state aid for the loss of students of just over four and a half million. So overall, total net, yes, go ahead.
John, excuse me, just say, I just want to jump on just a second. The projected, the projected enrollment this year is 9722, but John talked about the super blend earlier, and what our, what we basically ended up with was about 10 mil, 10,000, 10,400 students is how, what we received for our foundation allowance because of the super blend and how it was done for the, this past year. So the, if you look at our enrollment, as you know, our enrollment from the fall was 94, 64, or whatever, I can't remember, somewhere in there. So it shows a big decrease here because of the super blend. So the super blend is four and a half million dollars difference because of our enrollment count. So, and, and speaking with executive team and with Superintendent, see, not Superintendent elect, the next Superintendent, he, Ben has had a lot of say in this, and he's been brought along all along, like, he has lots of questions. So I feel very comfortable right now in, in what we're going to present further. So just wanted you to know that he, he has been involved with the, along with the executive team in looking at these issues right here. Sorry, John.
No problem. So in effect, it'd be about a $10 million expected loss of revenue for the general fund side for next year at this point. On the expenditure side now, there's, again, this is what the current staffing is on the general fund side, 895 FTE. There's some knowns that are going to be increased because of staff's increases, so that's why they're showing an increase in that. We're just recognizing some savings that, because of what we previously discussed about open positions, there's, there's going to be positions that are open throughout the year, or partial year or whatever. So we, we kind of recognize some of that's going to happen. Discretionary budgets, showing an increase of almost 7 million, and that's partly for the putting back into what we had able to cover in with CARES One funds this year for the custodial wages or contract, and then also the reduction in transportation costs for, for not having transportation, but bringing back up to what you work contractually, excuse me, contractually obligated for, for next year. And then, as Sam had previously mentioned, came in on time, where we're approved by the legislation in time, so we plan to use those in next year. And this is for the, that early portion of the ESAR II that they allowed us to at least plan for, but they have not officially reviewed and approved, MD side to allow us to actually submit for reimbursement of those funds. And then the implemented solutions, and Sam can talk about this more if he wants to, I just threw you in there, Sam, but a reduction of 31 FTE, and that is mainly positions that have to deal with retirements or resignations that we've been able to shift positions that, or staff that have into those positions and not have to backfill on the other side.
John, I do want to just add a couple things right here in this, in this section. I've talked to the board before about this, that we are looking, we're very concerned about substitute, substitute teachers next year, and we're also very concerned about where our students are actually at as they come back after a year of online learning, and how, where are we going to have to put our resources to assist students in gaining back from things? Right now, if you look at the FTE, it's in red there, there's a 12.5 and a 31 something. We look at what our retirements and resignations will be, and that's how we're, you know, basically, we're going to do this by attrition. So we are actually at about 30, 30 or so right now, retirements and resignations for next year. So we've already, are getting close to that right now. What it's going to look like, though, as we go forward, will depend on what happens over the summer. My original thought in talking with, once again, the executive team and talking with Ben Schuldner, is to try to hang on as many staff as we can and replace them as people retire or resign. If we need to replace them, we have that ready-made area. If we would need a substitute teachers in the fall, we would have people available. We also displaced a program that REEP had for instructional coaches, that I feel is very important, that we're going to try and work with some, do some instructional coaches out of this group of people also. So this is going to be a really fluid situation in terms of how the budget looks after July 1st, or whenever, whenever we know what, what the legislative, the final call is on what our foundation allowance is. There's also some funding in there for declining enrollment districts and some other things that we would take part in. So this is why, this is just, it's a very unusual year, and we've got a lot to look forward to and see what happens as things unfold. Thank you, John.
So the net, as far as what we're projecting right now, is a, a used to have a fund balance of about 2 million, but still keeping us, again, because of what we're projecting for Budget Amendment Three, just under 12 million for, for next year, given what we know now. That is it for this.
And I'm, yeah, I muted myself. So this is, this is if, this is a preview, and we'll have, what we're going to have on the 17th is that we have a public hearing that'll be at 5:30, and then we'll also, we'll do that public hearing, we'll do much more in-depth, very, you know, 10 or 12-slide PowerPoint that discusses the budget and be able to answer as many questions as we can at that time. We also would answer any questions that you have right now.
Questions from board members? Mr. Lopez?
Yes. On the ESAR funds that we don't have yet, are, are some of those funds going to be retroactively placed on this year's budget? Are they going to be used in this year's budget? Are they going to be used in this year's budget or is it mostly on, or all of it in next year's budget?
The best answer we have for you, Mr. Lopez, would be it's going to be used in next year's budget right now. If, if for some reason the funds get released and they're at the end of, you know, let's say it's June twenty-ninth or something like that, well, we're probably still going to, we're not going to go back for, to this year and do a fourth amendment at that time. We would, it would be our recommendation that we just go ahead and we, and we've already talked to our auditors about how we ought to do this and they're in agreement that we could go ahead and just use it for next year and not worry about F Y twenty-one's budget.
Okay. So did I hear right that we have a projected ten million dollar deficit for next year? Or from the general fund?
We have a ten million dollar drop in, in revenue in the general fund, is what we have. And we're making it up on, on the expenditure side. We have a ten million dollar gap from last year to this year.
Okay. So the S R funds, are they able to be used to cover that deficit?
We have great flexibility in using S R funds, that is one of them. The S R funds, in my view, and there's a lot, there's about fifteen different things you can use them on, I guess, and is to use to make up for lost academic time. So, so it could be used for literacy teachers or math teachers and maybe for a one-year deal. The real issue with S R funds is like, is a lot like the grants we get. This is, and this is, S R funds are basically not reoccurring fund, not recurring funds, they're one-time funds. We have to be very smart and had a lot of talk, a lot of talks with Ben about this and there's going to, we have some ideas about things we can do. But yes, the, the short answer to your question, yes, they can be used for staff purposes also.
Thank you.
Other questions from board members?
Dr. Body has his hand up.
Dr. Body, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My question is about something that Sam was talking about a couple of minutes ago. And I see it a lot. Now, keep in mind that there's a pretty big selection bias with the kids that I see in my practice because they have a lot of social determinants of health and so they have a lot of challenges that maybe not every cha- every student in the district has, certainly. But the kids that I see especially are going to start the next school year behind. And every kid to some extent is going to be behind because of the, the online learning. How do we assess from a budget point of view, as well as just from a academic assessment point of view, exactly how, where those kids are starting from? Because we know they're going to be starting behind and that online learning isn't as good as in-person. But these kids are going to be coming from different backgrounds and perspectives and the kids that I see in my clinic, more or less, are going to be even more behind than the average student in the district. So how do we budget to help those kids get caught up? And then how do we actually assess where they're at?
Well, I'll talk about the budget part of it and I'll turn it over to Delsa, whoever you want from instructions, talk about the assessment part. And that's, I, I'll tell you, I'll be very honest, I have never, never suggested or recommended that we keep as many certified teachers on staff as we are this year because of exactly what Dr. Body, Dr. Body's question is that we, because we don't know, we don't know what the extent is that we're looking at and how deep the problem is. We need to have as many certified staff and others that can assist, assist students that needed, assist instruction as needed. So for example, instead of, you know, a classroom of thirty, maybe there's a classroom of thirty with two teachers in it, for, you know, whatever reason, it would depend on what the assessments of those, of those students show, where they're at. So I guess I want, I want to be very clear with the board that we are, we're not keeping extra staff on hand because we're just great people and we want to, you know, not have anybody not be here. We're keeping extra people here for a reason that we're going to need to face the reality for a year, maybe two years, on what we need to do to make, to get kids back where we would like to see them. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Chapman, you want to do assessments or how do you want to do this here?
Oh, sure. Thank you, Superintendent Sinicropi. And to, to Dr. Body, in terms of the academic component of where students will be coming this fall, here in the Lansing School District, we've been talking about this since la- since last summer. And we all know, based on research, that retention and/or intervention is not necessarily the answer. So that would mean that a heavy focus on remediation is not as well. And so we're very thankful that we had that mindset because we have been notified by the Michigan Department of Education that the focus should be and will be supported by M D E is on acceleration. And so one may ask, how can we accelerate with the learning loss that has occurred? Thankfully, here in the Lansing School District, we have continued in due diligence with our progress monitoring assessments with N W E A. And so we readily know for all of our students where they are and how we will need to support them, first of all, through tier one or direct instruction, but adding in those M T S S or multiple tiers of sustained support. We are planning through our school improvement plan, working with school-level leaders and their staff members to have a very robust means of addressing how we will service the students through differentiated instruction. Because you're absolutely right, our students are coming back to us with a variety, multifaceted means of what they have experienced during the pandemic. Dr. Diaz and Ms. Benavides, if there are any additional components that you would like to share specific to assessment and learning, feel free to do so at this time.
From my perspective, you shared that perfectly, very eloquently and concisely, so I don't have anything additional to add. Thank you. Ms. Benavides?
She's nodding her head, I think she agrees with.
No, I was just going to say exactly what Dr. Diaz said. That was exactly what I would have said.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thanks, ladies.
I love the teamwork and synchronicity tonight, it's cool. Any other questions from board members this evening? Again, if, if you have your hand raised, I can't see you, so just shout it out if you've got anything and you're virtual tonight. All right.
I don't see any virtual. And we'll have more in-depth on the seventeenth. So if questions come up after you've reviewed this and thought about it, don't hesitate to give me an email and we'll figure out some answers for you.
Or we'll reach out to the superintendent-elect and we can send him an email too. I like that.
Forget my email address and, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you very much, everybody. Moving on to report from superintendent, Sam, back to you.
Okay, I'm telling you, we're on a roll here. As Dr. Chapman mentioned, I think, as somebody mentioned earlier, graduation ceremonies will be Sunday, June sixth with the following schedule. Nine AM is Adult Ed, eleven AM Eastern High School, two PM Sexton High School and four PM Everett High School. Graduation ceremonies will be held at five nineteen Cal- West Kalamazoo Street in front of the Shirley M. Rogers Administration Building. And it is, it is not a drive-through ceremony, it will be, there will be a procession. But it's, the only thing different is it's going to be kind of hot that day. Guests and graduates, please refer to your packets for arrival times, parking directions and safety protocols. My second topic tonight, tonight is the final board meeting for Dr. Delsa Chapman. As you know, she has been appointed deputy superintendent for the Michigan Department of Education. Delsa's intelligence and her dedication to the Lansing School District are well-known. She will be greatly missed by all of us. For the did you knows though, tonight, we're going to learn a little bit more about Delsa and what has made her the person she is today. Now, I will turn this over to the executive team, executive team for some interesting information. Suzie Corbin, please.
Thank you. Did you know that Dr. Chapman was born in Mississippi and migrated to Michigan with her parents? Her grandma was a true Southern belle that wore dress, pearls and pumps to a simple trip to the grocery store, hence Dr. Chapman's inherited poise and style. From her toddler years until she moved to Michigan, Delsa spent countless hours in the kitchen with grandma, learning how to cook southern cuisine and bake pancakes from scratch. Sergio?
Thank you.
Good evening. Did you know that Dr. Chapman wore her first pair of heels at the tender age of seven after repeatedly asking her mother for a pair of black patent leather kitten heel pumps that Delsa circle in a J C Penney catalog? This tradition of wearing high heels has continued throughout her life. And as a matter of fact, due to her high heels shoes, her and I were half an hour late to an evening event in Gatorsburg, Pennsylvania because she decided to walk to the event wearing very high heels shoes. Thank you.
Is it Cordelia, John?
Yeah. Did you know that in nineteen eighty, Dr. Chapman first deemed herself as a leader in the sixth grade as she came home proudly wearing her neon orange safety patrol sash with the captain badge shining on her left shoulder? She came through the door and announced to her younger siblings and their mom that she is now Captain Delsa.
Cool. That's a, that's good, that's cool. Cordelia?
Thank you. Did you know that during her senior year of high school, Dr. Chapman rebelled against her parents and guidance counselor's advice to apply to multiple colleges? The young Dr. Chapman replied, why apply to all of those colleges and pay multiple application fees when I know that Michigan State University is the best choice for agricultural science? And that's exactly how she did it. She went on to earn her V A, M A and doctoral degree from M S U. Thank you.
Jessica?
Did you know that one of Dr. Chapman's pastimes is landscaping her yard? She spends countless hours of her free time planting, pruning and mowing.
Dr. Diaz?
Thank you. Did you know that Dr. Chapman is affectionately called Glamour by her four beautiful granddaughters? You can find her on any given Sunday in the summer in her backyard, enjoying cool treats with her four grands as they play in Glamour's park.
Thank you, executive team. And I guess I just want to, the final thing before I turn it over to Delsa for a minute and that is, we, we love you, Delsa, we wish you nothing but the best. And this was, glad we had an internal spy that could help us with some of the details of your early life that made you the person you are today. So I'll turn it over for the final did you know to Dr. Chapman.
Uh, did you know that I'm thoroughly surprised? I just, I'll just very quickly say thank you. My heart is, is very, very full. I was surprised today at the end of our E T meeting with a celebration. I was totally surprised, knew nothing. So, and it's hard to keep things from me. So I'm very impressed with the fact that I, that I knew nothing. I would like to thank the Board of Education, Superintendent Sinicropi and all the members of the executive team and the Lansing School District family for being so supportive, always believing in me and providing me this opportunity. And I'm going to stop now because I feel the tears coming, but I want you all to know that I will never forget the Lansing School District, it will always be very near and dear to my heart. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Rachel, should I call on you, should the president?
Um, go ahead, Dr. Rodriguez.
Thank you very much. Doctor, I think I am crying already. And, and Dr. Chapman, you have showed to Lansing City, to the district, to the Board of Education, the fortitude you have all these years on all the things that you have done and you have suffered. This fortitude inspires us. And I hope and junior challenges for all Michigan, this fortitude stays with you because that is one of the virtues that I think that you have from the beginning and you are having today. Thank you.
Vice President Willis has her hand up.
Go ahead, Mrs. Willis.
Thank you. I, I appreciate the chance for us to, to bid you adieu. Dr. Chapman, it's strange, I'm actually not sad. I was sad and very like, oh man, what are we going to do when we, when I heard the announcement? But I am so incredibly proud of you and thankful for what you were able to do for this district during your time here. I can't think of a single time that you were asked to do something that you didn't step up and do it or volunteer to do it before it was asked of you. Can't think of one. And to know that that is what is going to go to the state and have the opportunity to be the state deputy and superintendent, it just ma- it makes my heart sing. And even just now when you were talking about assessments and, and what's going to be required by the state, I was like, huh, I wonder if we're going to have an inside person that can make sure we know those things? So it just, it, it makes me happy and proud and I, I'm just so thankful that, that you're still going to be, carry part of the Lansing School District family with you. And if ever we miss you, we'll just hang signs in our building so you can see them from your new office and, and we're just, we're going to miss you dearly. But we, I really appreciate everything that you've done for Lansing School District. Oh, and then I can't believe you guys didn't mention one did you know, which is that Dr. Chapman is the sororal sister of the vice president because she's an AKA. And I don't know how we failed to mention that, that she's going to do great things. And I mean, if the vice president could be an AKA, then, you know, just saying, Dr. Chapman, Sky's One.
Thank you.
Mrs. Willis, just to clarify, you mean the vice president of the United States, correct? And not the vice president of our, okay, okay. Because I was like, I didn't know Rachel was in a sorority. But then I realized you were talking about the vice president of the United States of America, which is also very cool. Um, ooh, Delsa. I want to echo a lot of what Rachel said, that we're so excited for this new opportunity for you. And we know this time of year is always bittersweet when the kids are graduating. But it feels like our mom is graduating. Not that you're old enough to be my mom, you know what I mean? I just, like Dr. Rodriguez said, the, the fortitude and the grace that you have is, it's a blessing to the world. And our district has been so fortunate to have you for so long. So the board has a small token. This is why we have you in your office tonight, so we can run this down to you. It's probably going to arrive with fingerprints. But we have a small token and I'll read it. With our greatest appreciation to Dr. Delsa Chapman. In special recognition and appreciation for your outstanding performance and dedication to excellence in the Lansing School District. You made a difference. Presented by the Lansing School District Board of Education. And I will bring this down to your office and, Dr. Chapman, we love you and we wish you the absolute best.
Madam Chair, can I say something? Okay. Okay. Dr. Chapman, congratulations and good, good wishes for you and your new endeavors. But among all the things that she's done in the district, one of the great things that she's done is to lead the magnet program. And the magnet program has brought Lansing a lot of recognition nationwide. And that is because of you and your team and for that and everything else, I thank you for that. And again, wish you good luck and Godspeed in your new endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, can I say something, please?
Yes, Mrs. Moore, thank you.
Um, Dr. Chapman, we haven't worked together long. I'm newly elected on the board, but I don't know if you remember, um, I came to visit you. My son was in the first cohort of the New Tech Program. And he had gotten in some trouble at Forest View and he had something on his record, but I was determined to have him be a part of the New Tech Program. So I called your administrative assistant and I said, I have to talk to her. And you politely okayed him to get in the program just like that. You saved his life. You are a queen. And I want you to know also that I'm from Muskegon, so I really feel like we're family. I don't know if you knew that, but, oh, ski time, yes.
Okay.
But I wanna, I wanna say that I commend you. We have not been in this space long, but I do appreciate your leadership. I truly do. And I thank you for all that you've done and I, and I hope that, um, and pray that we stay in touch because my Aunt Carol adores you. I want to share that also.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Moore. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Well, that concludes our report tonight.
Sam, Sam, just a minute.
We don't have enough people crying.
Sam, let me stop you for a minute. Ms. Hodgins, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Chapman, you know that you have been my inspiration? I have admired you as a senior member of the board. I can, I, I just can't tell you how honored I have been to serve under you. The magnetic problems, programs would have never come to fruition without you, and that is something that we forever be thankful. I wish you the best in your next, uh, and I, you nursing the word, and I thank you for the example that you have been to so many young women, uh, in the Lansing public schools. And, uh, and I thank you for everything you did for the Lansing School District. And I love you and will always love you and remember you with affection.
Thank you, Ms. Hodgins. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna keep, keep it moving here this evening. Thank you so much, everyone. Moving on to routine matters and old business this evening, first up are our committee reports. Facilities Committee, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have a report today, but I'm letting you know, and you already know anyway, that we do have a meeting tomorrow at 2:00 PM, the, uh, Facilities Committee. And among other things, we will be, uh, discussing the auto sales proposal as well as the Ed Center sale proposal. So we'll have some of that information. And, uh, if, if the board members have specific questions that they want to, us to look at and, and, and bring to the table, please either email me or, uh, email John or whatever. So let us know so that we can go ahead and, and have those discussions, ask those questions, and then bring back, uh, information back to the full board. Okay? So that's my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Personnel Committee, Mrs. Willis.
Thank you, Madam President. Our Personnel Committee this week is brief. There's just one item for us to approve in our consent agenda for, um, a position for approval. It is a social worker position that will be housed in LSCA. Any questions? That concludes my personnel report, Madam President.
Thank you, Mrs. Willis. Equity Committee?
Thank you. Just to give you guys an update on, on how things are going. So, um, so we had our big project kickoff, kickoff between West Ed and the Lansing School District in April. So the purpose of that kickoff meeting was to review the project goals, research questions, identify data sources, establishing our working relationship to figure out, okay, when West Ed is here, what are we gonna do? So we, we, um, sat down with district personnel, talked about West Ed's mission, how their approach was going to be for the audit, and then sort of figure out what we were gonna do for next steps. So next steps was we had a meeting in May, and during that meeting, we met with more district personnel and our district project leads, um, for the Equity Committee work, which will be our district project leads will be, Mr. Sinekropi, help me out.
Well, we have, uh, Ms. Benavides and Mr. Barna, or excuse me, Mr. Simmons, Teddy Simmons?
Yes.
With the data. Um, Dr. Chapman, and we'll have to be, well, I don't think we can get her to keep staying. So, uh, we will probably, at least until I get to, until Ben and I discuss things, we would have, is Dr. Diaz right now until we get working on some stuff.
Thank you. Um, so next steps will be working on our surveys, implementation of focus groups, and, and analysis. So next thing to look out for, um, you know, we, we recognize that we have surveyed our students and staff quite a bit this year. Um, and we don't want this survey to be overlooked or not answered well because of survey, survey fatigue. And we don't want it to be mixed up into confusions about, um, mixed up into confusion about back to school and all of those sort of things. So we're working on the best way to survey our staff and students and community and then kick off our, um, focus group. So that'll be the next thing for you all to stay tuned for information regarding those two things. Um, any questions? That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Mrs. Willis. Moving on to our consent agenda for this evening, our consent agenda includes approval of the May 20th, 2021 regular meeting minutes and receipt and approval of the personnel report. May I have a motion?
President?
Dr. Rodriguez?
I move then the Board of Education, um, approve the consent agenda as presented.
It's been moved by Dr. Rodriguez, supported by Mrs. Hodgins. Are there any further questions or discussion regarding the consent agenda this evening? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Batty?
Yes.
Dr. Burrows?
Yes.
Ms. Hodgins?
Yes.
Mrs. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mrs. Lilge?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Willis? Motion passes.
She said yes.
Yes, sorry, I couldn't get off of you. Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Moving on to action items for this evening, first up is the 2021 resolution designating the district's election representative Nancy Stanley. May I have a motion?
Madam President?
Mrs. Lilge?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the 2021 resolution designating district's election representative Nancy Stanley.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Lilge, supported by Mr. Lopez. Any discussion? Sam, can you tell us a little bit about what this is?
Yeah, um, this is, uh, this is the annual election or, I'm not sure if it's annually, but for the ISD Board of Education. And typically, there's, what happens is that there's one opening right now, there's one person running, and that's Nancy Stanley. And each district within the ISD gets a vote. So that's what this is right now. This is the Lansing School District vote.
Thank you. Dr. Rodriguez, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I think they had four board members there and the, the period is about six years, I think. And then, and then they have to, they don't have elections, they had to apply. And after they can in front of their representative for all the 11 districts in Ingham County. I was there last time, but we had to nominate somebody to be there Monday, early in the morning, to interview the candidates, usually candidates, this time it's only one. And then I, whoever is there has to represent the board.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Any questions from board members? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Batty?
Yes.
Dr. Burrows?
Yes.
Ms. Hodgins?
She said yes.
Mrs. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mrs. Lilge?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Willis? Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to fiscal year 21 budget amendment number three, approval. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Lopez?
Yeah, recommend that the Board of Education approve the FY 21 budget amendment number three as presented.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Lopez, supported by Mrs. Hodgins. Any, uh, discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Batty?
Yes.
Dr. Burrows?
Yes.
Ms. Hodgins?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Mrs. Lilge?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Willis? Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Crisman Construction Company and C2AE Partnerships. May I have a motion?
Madam President?
Mrs. Lilge?
I move that the Lansing School District reaffirms its partnerships with Crisman Construction Company and C2AE.
Support.
It's been moved by Mrs. Lilge, supported by Dr. Burrows. I'll speak to this a little bit. In recent weeks, board members have all had, um, some information presented to them regarding, uh, the fact that next spring, in the spring of 2022, some old debt will be falling off the books. And we will be starting to undergo another, uh, series of meetings in order to talk to voters about extension and renewal of millage dollars next spring. In that light, we have existing partnerships with Crisman and C2AE, two companies that really help us steer all of our bond projects, um, and have been really remarkable partners in helping us be good stewards of every dollar and stay on time and under budget with our projects. And this action that we're taking this evening is simply a reaffirmation of our faith in those partnerships, um, and our willingness and eagerness to continue those partnerships as we think about future projects and, and what we'll be undertaking in the next couple of years. So this is by no means entering into a legal contract with them. It's just essentially a show of good faith that we like them and we want to keep working with them, especially since our project manager for our bond projects, I don't know if everyone knows this, I think everyone knows this, but Rob Crowe, who works at the Crisman Company, is a high school friend of mine because he is, of course, a Sexton Big Red. Any other? Dr. Rodriguez?
Thank you for your explanation. Do we have anything in writing that tell us about the partnership?
I don't have anything to give you in writing tonight. I'm sure there, there are existing, uh, partnership agreements that I have never actually seen because those partnerships, those partnerships were in place before I became, maybe before I became a board member, um, which means that you were a board member, so you should have already seen them, but.
No, I blame myself. Don't worry about that. Every question that I had is because I blame myself and not knowing. If I knew the answer, I wouldn't ask the question.
We will, I will dig up whatever, um, contracts or, or formal agreements we have with them and maybe we can examine those later this summer and get familiar with the terms.
I don't have any problem and good faith
Sure.
to go yes, just to, for the past experience. And, and you already explained clearly that doesn't implicate any kind of money or legal actions or anything.
Correct. Yep.
That is, um, the kind of liberation, anyway.
And actually, what, what I find to be very interesting with Crisman in particular is that they, uh, it was this way with the bond, the pathway promised bond in 2016 as well, but they don't get paid to help with the bond campaign. They, they help us with our bond campaign, um, and with getting our message out to voters and, and developing a clear message. They do all of that, uh, hoping that the bond passes and that we continue our work with them. So they kind of help us do all that work with their fingers crossed that the bond passes and, and luckily it has and they're, because they're very good at, at what they do. But if, if heaven forbid, our bond failed, Crisman would have given us a lot of work for free. Which would be a bummer for all parties involved, but that's the way the cookie crumbles sometimes. Any further discussion on this item this evening?
Madam President?
Yep, Mr. Lopez?
Will this item be sent to the Facilities Committee for review as well?
If we are entering into new legal partnerships with them, then yes, it will come to Facilities first.
Okay.
Anybody virtually with anything to add?
I don't see any hands.
Okay. If that's all, will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Batty?
Yes.
Dr. Burrows?
Yes.
Ms. Hodgins?
Yes.
Mrs. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Lilge?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Willis? Mrs. Willis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much, everyone. I was remiss in not removing the next item from our agenda, but we do, we can go ahead and remove, uh, non-renewals. And before Dr. Rodriguez makes his announcement, I do want to just, um, clarify that in, in July, our only currently scheduled board meeting will, is on July 8th. We will be having another board meeting that month, and it will more than likely be on July 22nd. Because I know there are some Lansing Promise events happening on the 15th. Is the 22nd a Thursday? Yep. So board members can stay tuned for more detail about that, but I just want to put it on everybody's radar that there will be a board meeting in July. The, the one, the one on the 8th will be an ISS. So we will certainly be having at least one.
What about July 1st?
I, I, I fear that July 1st is too close to the weekend of the 4th and people, I don't care because I have nothing to do with my life, but I thought that other people might want to do something for the 4th of July. Dr. Rodriguez, are you ready for your report?
Thank you. Yes, Madam President. Thank you. Sunday, June 6th, we will have the celebration of the graduation of Class 2021. And I think we repeat several times, start in the morning and 11 o'clock and 2 o'clock at 4 o'clock. Wednesday, June 9th, had the high school only exams. Non-a-day for all schools. Thursday, June 10th, we will have the meeting, we have big council. And Friday, June 11th, last day of the school 2021. And Thursday, June 17th, regular virtual board meeting at 6 o'clock, see Lansing School District website for Zoom link. And will be also the Policy Committee this Friday at 9 o'clock meeting. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for the meeting today. You did a good job.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. I love you. Any board comments this evening? All right. Mr. Lopez? Take your time. I don't want to go home and do bedtime. So you take your time, mosey over.
Yes. I'd like to congratulate the Latino Advisory Committee and the, uh, School District's Recognition, uh, Program Team. I just met the young ladies, they were very good, and they did a very good job. And all those that took part in it. It was a Zoom, uh, event. Speaker was, uh, Mr. Arauz, son of our own Reiner. Uh, speaker was, uh, Mr. Araoz, son of our own Reniero Araoz. Uh, he did a really good job. Uh, everybody did well. Uh, I'd just like to point out that, uh, Justin Sheehan, Justin? Yeah, that's his name, just forgetting things. Justin Sheehan, uh, also did a really good job in terms of, of the promise. And of course, uh, our superintendent, Mr. Sinekropi, and, uh, did a fantastic job. I forgot to introduce him, but he still did a great job. And Sergio, obviously, uh, was the leader of the pack in terms of, uh, staff, district staff. Seim Benavides and the committee. Uh, Chair John Castillo, Seim is a treasurer. And I think Angela Samora, uh, is the secretary. So congratulations to all of them. And, uh, it was a good program and, um, it was really enjoyable. We were all here, the presenters. So thank you very much. I just wanted to acknowledge that, that it happened, and it was a, a good program. And congratulations to all the kids that received scholarships.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Any other board comments this evening? Really? Anyone? Okay. Um, at 7:11, with no, with no further business before the board, we are adjourned. See you Sunday.